Welcome to another interview with Refermark Media. I've got Matt Cross, a good brother with me in the studio today. We've got a good interview that we are looking forward to have with Matt Cross today. And if you want to see more content like this one, we ask that you click that bell to get notified when it's released and you subscribe to our channel. So you can see all these interviews. We've got a lot of big ones coming up and you're not going to want to miss this one. Matt Cross is a devoted Christian husband and father whose faith and love for family and community shape everything he does. For 25 years, he has served as a pastor and missionary. He spent more than a decade as a deputy. And for the past four years, he has served faithfully as a school board member. His life's passion reflects a deep commitment to faith, public service, education, and community safety. Matt's passion for public service grew out of his desire to make schools safer and more supportive for students, teachers, and families. In leadership, he has worked to strengthen parent engagement, expand opportunities for students, and ensure accountability in local government. His advocacy for school resource officers and his commitment to fiscal responsibility highlight his concern for both the well being of children and the trust of taxpayers. Beyond his public roles, Matt is known for his strong faith, his devotion to family, and his courage to stand up for what is right, even in the face of opposition. Brother, will you open us up in prayer?
Yes. Father God, we thank you for this day that you have made for us today. We will rejoice and we will be glad in it. Father, we pray that you would take our hearts, conform them more to you, God, and cause our love and our passion for you to increase, Lord. Cause our faith to increase, Lord, in you, God, in our weakness, be made strong. And may we, God, all the days of our life, give you the honor and glory and the praise that you are due in every area of our lives, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, brother. Hey, you do the same scripture that I typically do when I start a prayer. This is the day the Lord has made. Let us be glad and rejoice in it. That's awesome. So Matt is on the Rockingham County School Board, right? How has your faith shaped your service on the school board?
Yeah, I think that, you know, I'm not ashamed about that, but everything that I do is filtered through my faith. And so first of all, Christ has called us to love. And so I do the best job I can to love others and to treat them as I would want to be treated. And so those are kind of my marks of serving on the school board is a passion to do good unto others and to love them and to protect them. My whole reason why I wanted to be on the school board to begin with, before COVID and before CRT and before all these things that were going on in politics, was that I had a passion to keep our kids safe. And so that's why I wanted to serve in law enforcement. That's why I wanted to serve on the school board. And I think I've made a difference the last four years of being on the board.
That's good, man. I've looked at your Facebook the past few weeks or days, actually, super sleuthing a little bit, to see the kind of things that you're fighting for. Did some deep research and you are someone who gets busy, not somebody who just got on there and, you know, strolled along with it for clout or anything like that. So that's awesome. So you were in ministry. Were you in, you were in youth ministry specifically for a while, right?
Yeah, for 15 years I served as a youth pastor at my church. When I got saved, all I really wanted to do was be in ministry. Like that was my, that was my goal, my love, my passion. And it seemed like God, you know, God always has, you know, a different route for us to go sometimes, you know?
Shaping mold to get you ready.
He took Moses on the 20-year tour, you know, and so.
We all want it today, too.
So, well, actually, well, he took Moses on the 40-year tour. Sorry, I said that wrong. But, you know, he took me on a 20-year tour and had no idea that I'd get an opportunity to work as a, in law enforcement. I remember calling my dad and he was a state trooper at the time. And I said, Dad, I said, do you think I could do this, talking about being in law enforcement? He said, yeah, he said, I think you could do that, Matt. And so I did. I tried it out and ended up loving it and didn't really. I wanted to do that all the way till I had an opportunity to serve in ministry and God allowed me to do that. But it served me well. I didn't know at the time that it was going to, you know, lead into four years, the last four years of my life on being on the school board. But it did uniquely qualify me to sit on an educational board that I bring my own talents to the board and that's school safety and I know what I'm doing.
That's a good point. I didn't even think about that.
Yeah, I know what I'm doing. I know what I'm talking about when it comes to school safety because for a decade I sat on there and I saw what works and I saw what wasn't working. So I bring that, that knowledge and background to the school board and I don't think, but I know that's the number one thoughts on parents' minds, bringing their kids home safe every day when they go to school.
Yeah, absolutely. Especially with the chaos these days. It is rough to turn on the news pretty much every week when you hear of something. We had the Catholic school shooting not that long ago. You had the Mormon building that was ran into, caught on fire shootings in there. You had the, I'm specific to say Mormon building, but you have the, you have the woman on the subway. You have Charlie Kirk. You have all these crazy things just happening all the time. And parents are more unsettled than ever with all those things going on. Do you think the school can be, we homeschool our kids and we have a lot of families at our church that private school. So you're in Harrisonburg, there's private classical Christian Redeemer is out there. That's where a few of our kids go there. Do you think that the school system can be redeemed? Because it used to be Protestant, like early America, the school system was Protestant. There was prayer in school. The reason Catholic schools were built, when Catholics came here from Ireland during the potato famine, was because they came and they were like, those schools are Protestant. So we have to build our Catholic schools. So you think there's hope for that?
Yeah, you know, in all of our schools in Rockham County, because this is under the Virginia code, but it has to be displayed in all the foyers, the motto, "In God we trust."
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, a lot of people don't know that. So you walk into the school and before you go down, thinking about Spotswood, but when you, before you go down its main hallway at Spotswood High School or at Turner-Ashby High School, you see a picture frame and a motto, "In God we trust" on there. And so you're right. I mean, the beginning history of American history, they taught the Bible inside the schools. And yeah, do I think the public schools can be redeemed? Yes, I do. But it's really going to take people with, that are principled and with purpose, getting on school boards and wanting to do what's in the best interest of kids. And, you know, one of the things I've said in running, I'm running again for school board in this year. And one of the things I've come out and I've talked about is how I want to put chapels in all of our middle schools and high schools. And we kicked God out many years ago. And so I think it's only right to say, okay, if you, the mental health crisis is crazy right now within our nation and things. We're throwing millions of dollars into the mental health and we should be concerned about our kids' mental health. But we know as Christians, what can save them through that mental health and that's Jesus Christ. And so we've seen that, you know, in our school division where they have given place, a safe place for prayer during Ramadan for our Muslim students. And I thought last year, I was like, you know what, why don't we, we should.
If you can do that.
Yeah, absolutely. That's what I, actually, that's what I said because I was a little bit upset that they were only given a safe place like that for, for one religion. And I said, no, if we're going to offer, it needs to be offered to all religions, right? And so I'm, so that came to thought, like, you know what, we should have a space available and for kids to be able to go to and pray that when they, either when they're at lunch or they got all their work or the teacher can send them down there. And not knowing that, but you know, Texas and Florida already do something similar to that.
I mean, it doesn't surprise me about either one of those states.
Then they have chapels, chaplains, I mean, inside their schools.
See, that's where I think getting a chapel isn't going to be such a hard thing. Like people might be listening and think, you're not going to be able to do that in schools. They don't know that Mormons meet in the public school system with a, whatever they would call their leadership, like once a week to do, in the public school system. As long as it's not, same as FCA, as long as it's not led by a teacher. We used to have it at my school to where a teacher could kind of be there, but they weren't allowed to be the one who addressed the student body with a devotion or something like that. I don't think it'd be that hard to get that done. Like at first you said it and I was like, no way, you're going to be able to do that. And then I kind of walked through it in my head and was like, actually, there's a good potential.
Yeah, it can be done and it's already being done, right? And so putting a chapel in the school is the easy part. How we do the framework for a chaplain to be in the school will be a little bit different, but that's possible as well. Talking with the school attorney on how we're able to do that and kind of real excited about that, that if God gives me the opportunity to be able to serve another four years and to be able to bring, which I didn't know before, like, but to bring a chapel in the school and a chaplain. And then I've already talked about bringing school board prayer, legislative prayer back to our school board. Our school board used to pray, the elected body used to pray all the way up to 2010. And in 2010, they stopped praying. Well, I'm sure it was because they were getting pressured by groups that didn't want them to pray, right? And so if there's ever a time in history where we need God in our public schools, it's now. And so I started out my chairmanship in 2024 praying and we were going to take it all the way to the Supreme Court. I was willing. I had done all the research and everything about that, knew how to do it, knew how to lead legislative prayer. You actually bring in a chaplain to be your, the chaplain of the board who prays for the elected body. So the elected body should not be the ones who are praying, but it should be a chaplain that comes in, just like they did, our founding fathers did. They brought in ministers to come in and pray with them, right? And so the same framework and I end up finding out I didn't have a majority for legislative prayer, which is really disappointing because I've seen, brother, how legislative prayer can work. We were searching for a new superintendent for Rockham County in my, what, year and a half of first being on the school board. And one of the other school board members, which was actually Dan Breeden, looked at me and said, he, or looked at this whole school board before we started our first interview. And he said, I feel like we need to pray and ask for God's wisdom in this whole search. And I looked at him, I said, Dan, I said, that's a great idea right there. And so he led us in prayer and we asked God to give us wisdom and understanding to be able to hire the next superintendent. And I think we interviewed around six people for the job. And there was this one person that was from Maryland, actually Montgomery, Maryland. Have you heard, do you remember that? Well, that was all the way up to the Supreme Court here recently with all the sexually explicit stuff that was in their child's.
Books and stuff like that. Okay, I think.
Remember the parents wanted to opt out and they were like, no, you can't opt out. And so the Supreme Court made a ruling on that. I said, no, the parents have a right, they can opt out all that they want to. And so he was actually someone up in that school division in Montgomery County. And I was like, absolutely not. Like there was just this vile liberal vibe coming off. And then they, the majority of the board I was sitting on that time, I was, they were ready to hire him. And he could not get his license for Virginia in time to be able to hire him for the next superintendent. Well, I see that as an answered prayer.
You got some providence there. Hey, I believe the Lord's in control of everything. So if something like that happened, then.
Yeah, amen. No, but I believe that happened because we took time to ask God to help us. And then we turn out with what I believe probably one of the best superintendents to ever be hired in Rockham County. Larry Shiflett, Dr. Larry Shiflett. He was born and raised in Rockham County. And he's a fellow believer in Christ. And he's just, he's an awesome man to be leading in this time and hour.
That's good, man. Rockingham County's got some good stuff going on. I really enjoy the layout, how there's actual towns and actual mayors and different things like that. Where I grew up in Augusta County. I went to Fort Defiance High School and we just have kind of like a, everything's just, do you know New Hope?
Yeah.
Literally, we got a one stop, main stop, one grocery store, New Hope Grocery. It's not really a grocery store that has a manual pump and a community center and no stoplights. That's my town and we don't have a mayor or anything like that. So I do like how Rockingham County is really laid out. I think it, it makes you, it fosters community. Like Elkton will have a, and I mean Elkton's got plenty of problems. You have plenty of people that go to those meetings.
Those are, that's my family down Elkton.
They're fighters. So you go to a, you go to a meeting for the town and there's always something that people are brawling about. And there are about five fire stations in that, in the area because of that. But Elkton, I like that. Like I want you to have to, everybody to go and have to duke it out to figure out what you're going to do as a town. And I really like what Rockingham County's got going on. So.
It's a great place to live. You know, when I grew up as a kid, I wanted to move out as fast as I could. But as I told you earlier, when I came to faith in Christ, my senior year, you know, my whole worldview changed after that.
Where'd you go to high school?
Spotswood High School. Yeah, I graduated. Actually, I was born in Charleston, West Virginia in 1979 and in 1980, we moved to Stewart-Straff, Virginia. And I stayed in Stewart-Straff till 1990. And in 1990, we moved over to Rockingham. And so I've got some friends, I'll know if you remember Brock Johnson from Stewart-Straff. Me and him were best friends growing up.
That's a super familiar name.
Yeah, well, one of the best running backs ever to come out of Stewart-Straff High School. But yeah, just an incredible athlete. But we moved in 90 from draft to Rockingham and it's been home ever since. I love Rockham County.
That's good, man. Yeah, I like Stewart-Straff too. There's, they've got some, some good things going on over there. I was a wrestler and baseball player. And Stewart-Straff had a few solid wrestlers back when I was in school, the Davises. One of the Davis brothers was also a really good football player over there. And he was like a two or three time state champion in wrestling as well. Those guys were just, they were beasts out there. They raised them different out in the draft. What church were you, are you a part of right now?
So I'm a part of a church called Path Church. My father-in-law began this church in 2000, actually, I'm sorry. We moved to our, we built our building and we moved in in 2004. The church was started in November of 1998. It was birthed out of the revival flames of the Brownsville revival. I don't know if you ever heard of that.
Where's Brownsville?
Brownsville is in Pensacola, Florida. And Brownsville experienced a true move of God in the late 90s. It started on Father's Day of 1994. Over a million people would come through their church and over like, I forget how many years, six years, five or six years. And they had services for many of those, like nightly service for many, many years. But the conviction, the fear of the Lord, and was just moving unbelievable down in Brownsville. And so my mother and my father-in-law at the time went down there.
You said 90s?
In 1994. And Father's Day 94 or 95, sorry. It's been a while.
I'm not good at, I couldn't spit off numbers like that.
Yeah, so, but they, they went down there and wanted to experience the revival. And my father-in-law, the reason why we have the name Path Church now, we used to be the Potter's House Worship Center was the name of our church. He wanted to name it back when we, when we started, he wanted to name it the Revival Center. And, you know, my, my mother-in-law is very truth and justice. And she said, well, you can't name it that. We don't have revival yet. So, so anyway, they got the worship, they got the center part in there and they didn't, we were really big on worship. So we went down there and he said, he looked around and my father-in-law had been part of just a lot of religion and a lot of his life. And he just had a really love and a passion for Christ and wanted that first-person intimacy with Christ. And he looked around and he said, I saw people lost in worship. And he said, just crying and crying out to God, their hands, their hands are raised. And they wasn't focused on anybody else in there. It wasn't focused on the speaker. It wasn't focused on the band, nothing else. Only thing they were focused on was Christ in that service. And he said, I did my fist like this. And he said, God, I want to be part of something like this. And he said, at that time, when he said that, he said, I had a vision of a path that went to the left and went to the right, went up and down. And he said, I heard the Holy Spirit tell me, if you stay on the path, I'll take you to the place your heart desires. And so that, I'd heard that story for many years. And I experienced too, when me and my wife got saved, we took our honeymoon down to the Brownsville Revival. I'd never been. We were both in love with Christ.
How many years was that?
2000.
Okay, so this is like, they're still having.
Yeah, oh yeah. They had, they had revival services all the way up to early 2000s.
I've probably heard of it, but you've heard of so many. I know Matt's, our CEO's background, or his wife's church, one of them was a product of, I think theirs was like out west somewhere though, but anyway.
Yeah, this is a true move of God, like in, in our nation. I mean, for over a million people to come through your church and hear the gospel. Like this was, it wasn't something like, you know, we see most, most churches, come to revival week, you know, hear, hear the evangelist. But God, God took over and people got upset because people were coming. I mean, here's, here's church members getting upset and they're, and they're, they're leaving. They're walking out the door, leaving, saying, I want my church back.
That's like Chuck Smith. Have you seen Jesus Revolution, the movie? So that's how Calvary Chapel started. They were the same way. And Chuck Smith was, I used to be a big Calvary Chapel guy. A little bit of a journey, not as much as, you said, you're Pentecost Baptist method.
Yeah, I'm Methodist, I'm a Baptist Methodist. I was raised Baptist.
You ever confuse people when you put the meth in there?
Yeah, like meth what?
I was never on, I was a cop. I was never on meth.
Meth what? So there was a, so I was raised Baptist. I went to Iwanaas as a kid growing up. I went to Stewart-Straff.
So you went to probably Ridgeview or?
Yeah, Ridgeview Baptist Church is where I first went to church. And really where I first gave my life to Christ as a child was seeing my dad walk down to the altar there. And, you know, that's why it's so important for dads to be involved in the leader of their household, right? And so I saw my dad walk into the altar and man, I just, I wanted to go. I had a passion and I wanted to serve the Lord. And I went down there and kneeled beside my dad and I gave my life to Christ there. Of course, I would, I would backslide, you know, later on and throughout my teenage years, mom and dad went through a divorce. But it wasn't till my senior year of high school where I attended a Pentecostal church where we had been invited by a friend of my dad. And of course, my dad was a good Southern Baptist person. He's like, you don't go to Pentecostal church. You know, that's speaking in tongues and all that's with the devil. And so, but I went in there and I'll tell you what, the, when I, first time I ever heard someone speak in tongues, an older lady, I wasn't scared. I knew there was more of God than what I hadn't experienced. And it was, I felt the love of God in that place. And I remember God smiling at me, like I could see, I could, in my mind, I could see that, you know, Jesus in this brick wall, his face smiling down at me. And I'm like, internally, you know, I was, I was suffering. I was, there was no peace in my heart, no peace in my mind. I started doing drugs when I was 12 years old. And when I was, actually, I started smoking when I was 12. First time I ever smoked weed when I was 13. And by the time I graduated, at the end of my graduation there, I had, I had tried meth and I had tried coke. And I was glad, at that same time, at the end of my graduation year, was a time when I was really going after God and seeking God. And I'm glad because when I, when I got a hold of coke, it was one of those things that they'd tell you that, you know, the first time you ever do it, it's like the best high you ever get. And you're always chasing that one high. And I had a very addictive personality and I would have kept on going. But I, God got ahold of me in my senior year of high school and I told him, you know, you know the prayer in Philippians where Paul prays, oh, that I may know you and in the power of your resurrection, right? Like it's just, it's this prayer that's coming out of him, oh, that I may know you.
I almost kind of compare that to, I believe, help my unbelief. It's like, I want to believe so much more than I do because we are all fallen and we have this, I mean, this is, was, oh, who was, I believe, help my unbelief? I'd have to pull up the scripture reference. But I mean, this is someone who's an apostle, who's a scripture writer, I believe, help my unbelief. This might even be, it might even be Old Testament. But either way, you're talking about somebody that we look to as soul scriptural, we look to the word of this person who wrote these words guided by the Holy Spirit. And they're saying, I believe, help my unbelief. And that's like, I think it's beautiful.
Yeah, I absolutely do. I do. And I, and I, when I heard that prayer, like I, I didn't, like, so my first scripture reference, I remember I was 18 years old, 19 years old, just graduating. And here's Matthew 11:28-30, "Come unto me all ye labor, and heavy laden, and I will give you rest. Take my yoke upon you and learn of me. For my yoke is easy, and my burden is light. You shall find rest for your soul." And so when I heard that word yoke, I'm like, only yoke, I wasn't a country boy. So only, yeah, only yoke, I knew it was an egg yoke, right?
You're thinking these two yokes.
Like this King James means, like, it's so confusing, you know? But the more I read the scriptures, the more peace it gave me internally, right? And so I'm not understand, like yoke, I don't, I don't know what you mean by yoke. And I have such a, such a beautiful, I have a yoke now that someone bought me that hangs in my living room.
For the listeners that don't know, explain what that is.
Yeah, so a yoke, if you get, if you get a chance to travel the world and especially in third world nations, you'll still see them plow their fields with a yoke. And it'd be two oxens yoked together and they're pulling the plow behind them and plowing their fields. And so Jesus, actually the Greek, the Greek in there talks about, Jesus says, when he says, take my yoke, he means, it means actually to pick up my yoke. And so we are to pick up that yoke and put that on us. Therefore, we're no longer walking this world alone, but we're walking with Christ beside us, right?
There's always two holes in the yoke. The way I taught this at one point at a Bible study on a porch in Churchville with about 20 people out there. And the picture I tried to paint was you're in the yoke with Jesus, but your feet aren't even on the ground.
Yeah, he's carrying me. Yeah, you always hear people say, well, you know, you use Christianity, Christianity as a crutch. And I'm like, well, if Christianity is a crutch, then I've got Jesus underneath this arm and this arm and he's helping me every day of my life.
I don't use it as a crutch. I use it as a, what a full body cast. You think you're insulting me?
It's not an insult, right? It's like, yeah, he is. He's my everything, right? So, but I, I knew nothing. I just, I, so I was, I was talking there, but I gave my life to Christ. And I said, I was sitting on the front porch on McGaughy'sville Road and I'm like, I had known people that had went to church, who was involved in saying they were Christians. And they were smoking dope right there beside me, right? And, and I, and I knew, I was like, God, if I, if I'm going to do this, I'm going to do this with all my heart. Like there's no going to be no half in, half out thing. Like if I'm, if I'm going to serve the Lord and say I'm a Christian, I'm going to serve you with all that I have.
Yeah, amen.
And, and that's where that, that internal, but I said, if I'm going to do this, God, I want to know that you're real. Like I want to know that you're the same God that I read about in this Bible and I want to experience your fullness in walking with you. So that was my heart's cry, my heart's desire. And God has taken me on this beautiful journey over the last 25, 27 years of my life that has been so incredible. And I give him all the praise and glory for it all because I wouldn't have chose the path that I took, like in life itself. I would have, like, we had an offer to move over to El Salvador years ago, me and my wife, when we first got married. And we were going to be over thousands of youth and do all kinds of different things. And my wife was like, nope, that's not the call, God, for us. And I was like, you know, I was full way, like, no, we're, let's do this, you know? And thank God for our wives and our lives. And because God's plan was a whole lot better than what I thought, right? And so, but I've had that ability to go back and to do missionary work in Central America. And that's, it's beautiful.
Yeah. I think it takes all kinds of people, we talked about this a little bit before the episode, for anybody that wants to, we videoed that too. So if people want to go on, that'll be a behind the paywall, but we have some behind the scenes stuff that'll be available. How do people from so many different backgrounds within Christianity, I'll say, you and I have a lot of agreements, but we're always going to butt up against disagreements. So like even, I'm a particular, particular Baptist, for those of you that don't know what that is, Reform Baptist is what I would be. So I hear things like vision and I hear it like the tongues, I hear the tongues and I think, ah.
Oh, I know. I know that like it's friction because the Baptist friend, my Baptist friends out there. I grew up that, right? My dad was a, was a good Southern Baptist guy.
Well, and I'm even so like reformed is still completely different than that. Like I would never look at it and say, we're not fundamentalists. Like I've got a tattoo sleeve. If you, if people have heard of Jeff Durbin, Vody Bakum, who just passed away, like all those guys is what we are.
Mighty man of God.
And, and so we hear those things. And this is why I love sitting down to talk with people because I would prefer to sit across from people that I would have a different conviction of on those secondary and those tertiary things and have interesting conversations. Because I think iron sharpens iron, as one man sharpens another. And, but I hear things like that. And there's this internal, like, oh, I don't want to reject their experience, but I'm like, I'm more of a cessationist that I will be with and all these things. So how do people like that come together for the greater goal of the gospel? Like you're doing a lot in the public square right now. We don't have to agree on tongues to go into the public square.
Absolutely not, right? No, and we don't, and we don't have to agree with it even as walking together in Christ, right? But we do have to agree on the essentials. And that is that Jesus Christ was born of a virgin, died on the cross for our sins, raised on the third day. And if we put your hope and your faith in Him, it's by grace through faith, not by works. And if you do that, then we can partner together and we can, we can partner together with further, furthering the gospel of Jesus Christ in our nation. Because our nation needs God, right? And so I've always been like that, like I, we were talking earlier, the fact that, you know, our generation seems to be more willing to partner with other people denominational wise like that, that may not agree on the secondary things. But as long as we got the first thing in order, I can partner with you and we could be, we could be best buds, right?
If you weren't, if you weren't even, you got a hodgepodge of things and I do too in my, in my history. But if you were full-blown Pentecostal, I'd be happy to be sitting across from you.
Same here.
And you know that a Baptist, Pentecostal are in the same, on the same team, but about as far. And you know that a Baptist, Pentecostal are in the same, on the same team, but about as far apart as you're gonna get on that same team. And so, the dividing line for me with that is when you get into oneness. Because you can't reject who God is. When you start to manipulate who the person of God is, then I'm like, okay. This is the same thing all the cults do. We're not gonna be in that, in that area. But, but yeah, I, the, keep the primary things, the primary things, keep the secondary, the secondary, and the tertiary, the tertiary. Gavin Ortland, I don't know if you've ever heard of him, but he's an apologist who, he does a lot of work with, he defends the faith. With Catholics, like he'll have Catholics on his show, but he is trying to keep people from becoming Catholic too, at the same time. So he'll have a lot of episodes with Catholics, Eastern Orthodox, people like that. And he wrote a book called Theological Triage, Finding the Right Hills to Die On. Oh, and it's, it's so good. Actually, I haven't even read it, but I've heard him talk on it so many times.
I'll have to make sure you inbox me that. No, and we talked about earlier, there were many, we believe that, we both agree that there are many Catholics that are saved and born again and love Jesus. And so.
They're gonna be some of your biggest partners on pro-life.
They, they absolutely are. And, you know, I, I think we're, we're living in a generation that, they wanna know Christ. Yes. And, and if you, and if you keep the main thing, the main thing with, with Christ. We can do a lot of good work if we're partnering together as a body of Christ instead of being at, at odds with one another. You know, I've got some really good friends that we, you know, theologically, we don't believe on the same things. But man, I, I, there's no denying that they love Christ. There's no denying that they're in love with Jesus. And I'm, and I've, I've, I think I've done a good job in my walk with Christ by not alienating others because of that. And, and also not trying to be so dogmatic on what I believe.
Cage stagey is what they call it.
Is that what they call it?
It's called cage stage Calvinism and it's, it's when you first start to come to that conviction and see those things. And, and make them part of your belief system. It's called cage stage because they, you need to be put in a cage until you've matured through that phase. And this is coming from someone who is, like, I'm a Calvinist, I'm in my own camp. You need to put that person in the cage because they're just gonna fight about it with everybody, all the time, go on Twitter, that'll be your perfect example of that. And so like cage stage just means, and I want people to really believe what they believe in. If you do disagree with me, great, don't be in the mushy middle though. Really disagree with me and believe what you believe in, and then I can sit across from you and we can talk about it. And so, so like, I would gladly have an exorcist, a Catholic exorcist, I think that'll be so fun, to have a Catholic exorcist on the show. But I would tell them, I love being Protestant and I think everybody should be Protestant. Does that mean I think you're lost? No, absolutely not. Like, I wouldn't. So I think that the conversations can be real when people wake up in the morning and they look in the mirror and they know what they believe. That's the, and that was what everyone said about John MacArthur, the people who knew him, they were like, he woke up in the morning and he knew what he believed. And that's the person you can, I can sit with you all day. Now, if you're part of a different faith, then I'll sit across from you and preach Jesus. But I don't have to do that with people that I believe actually love Jesus, so. You had a Facebook post that recently exploded, got a bunch of likes. I'm gonna read it and then I'm gonna ask you what prompted it, after, after I read this post. So hopefully it doesn't, there we go. Oh, nope, I gotta look you back up. All right.
I say, I've had a few that went viral there.
This is the one that came across my, I just saw it on my feed, people sharing it, and it was actually right after the Augusta. I had a video that went real big, cause Augusta County School Superintendent, she sent out a letter saying that. She, they do this every year, but I didn't, well, actually a church member did not like the way this letter was worded. And they came to a council meeting and they were like, is there anything we can do about this? And someone was like, well, you could post it on social media, but you better be ready for a lot of people to get mad at you. And I'm like, I don't care, I'll do that. And so I made a video about that. And it was basically evolution, a letter saying that they're gonna teach evolution in the public schools. They didn't call it a theory and they also said they were gonna shut down all conversations that had to do with anything other than evolution. Like, if a student was to say, I think that's illegal, right?
Sad that they can't have a, I mean, here we are teaching evolution like it's a religion, right? And, and, and to believe in evolution, it takes more faith to believe in creation.
I mean, 75% of our tax, around 74, 5, 3% of taxpayers in Virginia are Christians. And to say, you can't come and teach your faith in this school, but you can teach evolution dogmatically. And without having theory placed in front of it and while shutting down all other religious conversations. I would, I would have been fine if they would have put theory right there. And they would have said, we're open to having conversations with students who have questions and we'll also welcome anybody who wants to teach even theistic evolution. Even though I disagree with it, I think it has its own problems, these different things, but it wasn't that, it was so dogmatic. And like, we're gonna shut down these conversations and, correct me if I'm wrong, you might know, you probably know better than me. But I've been told that if a student asks a teacher about their faith, they're allowed to talk about it, but they can't unless they ask them.
Well, that, that's how we operate in Rockham County as well. I'm now, and a, a student can also pray at school. Like I, you know, I always kind of laugh when they say, they kick God out of school. Well, I'd, I'd have my own thoughts on that. I, I take Jesus with me wherever I go. And so, I now did the organization, yes, organization definitely did. But I'm, so kids can witness at school, as long as it's not a disruption in the, during the class period time. Like throughout the hallways, at lunch and things like that, you can read, you can take your Bible to school.
I used to eat lunch when I was like, later years, I had rougher younger years.
Yeah, 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 no, my, my brother did too. My brother, a really cool story, I won't tell it today, but he, when we first got saved, man, we were like, I told you, we were pretty wild. And so, when he, he took in the, the family Bible, the KJV that rolled over the side, like when you hold it up, it just rolls down.
I'd expect that from Ridgefield.
It was the Bible that Paul read, so we have to read the KJV.
Have you seen that clip of that guy? He's like, I can correct the Greek. I'm like, shut that guy up.
So he, so he opens his Bible up when he gets saved and like in the morning time. And people were walking in and seeing this kid that was smoking dope and drinking beer, you know, the weekend before, reading this Bible right there. And he ends up being able to pray at his graduation and just really, really cool.
So this is the post. Attention students, I understand some of you have been asked to refer to your teacher as MX and use preferred pronouns, they, them. I want you all to know that we do not play the pronoun game in Rockingham County Public Schools. For some of you, this violates your religious convictions, while for others, it's very confusing. And for that, I apologize. It's gotta be tough growing up in the, in your generation. Remember to be kind, but also to not disregard your convictions or intellectual integrity. Please let me know if you are disciplined in any way at school. You can reach me by email at, and I won't say that email on here. What, what prompted you to go on Facebook? What's the story behind this? How'd you even hear about it?
Yeah, we, we had some complaints from some parents that when school started back this year, of a teacher we had that was. That was pushing the, you know, that transgender teacher asking the students to call them MX and.
Where's MX?
You know, I don't know, you have to go, you have to go look all this up, up, you know? It's, it's like, the first time I, I went to a class that I had another complaint one time that they said they had taken down the pride flag. Or taken down the American flag and put the pride flag up in its place. And not only that, but the teacher had like 20 different sexual flags hanging in the classroom. And like, I didn't know there was that many sexual flags. I had no idea to go on, online and look them all up and see what they all meant. And so, when I, when I look at MX, I'm like, what in the world does even MX mean, right? And so.
You say that in place of like.
Yeah, Mrs. or Mr. And MX, you don't have a, I guess your pronoun. Yeah, I think they're pansexual or skillet sexual, I'm not sure. But I, I just don't play the pronoun game and, and our kids, they're not playing the pronoun game in Rockham County either. And so I wanted, I wanted them to know, like, hey, you have a school board member that's gonna take up for you and you don't have to deal with this stuff if you don't wanna play the game. And I want our kids to have courage in the public school and to be able to be like, no, I don't even know what that means, MX. Like, I, like, if a teacher was to tell me that as a kid growing up, I wouldn't know what to, I would be confused. Because my dad raised me, even though I was a Hellion, you know, my dad raised me like, yes ma'am, no ma'am, yes sir, no sir.
Even those little things of like, the, the, these kids are supposed to be getting educated. I've heard people say, they're here, like something like that. And I'm like, I thought it was just one person. Like, it's just genuinely confusing, like you're confusing kids, even outside of the Christian worldview. Where we would say it's completely wrong and you're upsetting God because he made you as, he did not design you for that purpose. He designed you as male and female, but even outside of that, you're confusing kids because they're hearing, well, they've gotten here. And you're like, more than, who, I thought it was just one person. And they're like, it was one person. And then, for some reason, they just don't explain it either. They're like, I thought it was more than one person, or it was one person. They're like, no, it is one person. Then they just look at you. And I'm like, you said they.
I know.
That's just English language.
I can't imagine, and that's why I said in my post there, you know, I, I can't, I don't know how, it's gotta be confusing and hard for this generation being raised. Of, of them having to be, to go along with these things. And I'll, I'll tell you a story, but we had a, we had a teacher that transitioned over a summertime and a while back. And went back to school and I'd, I'd heard complaints that they were getting upset at the, at the kids for not calling them their certain pronoun. They wanted to be known. And so, can you imagine being a kid, you leave for the summer break and you come back and, and you see this individual. That maybe don't quite look the same, or maybe they do, I don't know. And, but then they're telling you to call them by a different pronoun than he or she. And so, it's, it's confusing for them. And this was, you know, this was at an elementary school where kids, they don't know the difference. And I, and I was, I was so upset that I said, I better not hear that the kids are being, you know, put down. Or being corrected because they're not calling a teacher by a certain pronoun, right? And thank God that Donald Trump won this last election, because we were heading down a path under Title IX. That would have caused, if, if, if that would have happened, I, I probably would have told people, you just need to abandon the public schools. Because I, we were going down a path with Title IX that, that was going to be a very terrible path. And Donald Trump got in there and thank God that he did. And it put an end to a lot of the woke hysteria that, that was going on in our public schools.
Yeah, as far as everything with Donald Trump goes, I consider him a friend, like an ally. I don't believe he's saved, like if, if someone actually asked me that, especially because he recently had a, he, he said, because of all the good work I've done with the wars. He can't be saved.
That's right.
You could solve every war in, in history and you couldn't be saved. But I do believe he gave us judges that overturned Roe v Wade.
Romans 13.
I believe that he is an ally to what we're doing. And I'm praying that he actually, God softens his heart and he comes to saving faith. And I think he's surrounded himself, like Pete Hegseth, he's surrounded himself with people I do believe are. And I would, I mean JD even, there, there's some tension in me, cause JD.
JD's wife is, is.
That's what the tension in me is, his wife. Because I'm like, you were already, like, he was Protestant before he became Catholic. And I'm just, I don't know, I don't know his heart, don't know him. But I do know, I've heard him speak out about his family and I'm like, when we're talking about, he's the one who brought up hierarchy of loves. So he was talking about love your own statesman more than you love the people. And really, that starts in the home though. So love the home, love your wife, as Christ loved the church, he died for her, your kids are underneath that. Then your next, then you have your immediate believers that are around you. And then you have your people who are unbelievers who are around you. So naturally, you have this hierarchy of love. So you're gonna love people more because of the proximity they are to you and the relationship they are to you. Well, if you look at that and you look at the governing bodies that exist, I believe there are three. I believe there's the home, I believe there's the church, and then I believe there's the government, the actual government. Well, his home is unequally yoked. And so that's where I get where, I'm not gonna judge his heart, he read the Nicene Creed like in front of the world, so.
I agree, but wouldn't it have been so incredible during Charlie Kirk's funeral? That if you had a, a president that would have walked down front and, and got on his knees. And raised his hands with tears in his eyes, you know, that would have been a moment for a nation, right? I really, so yeah, I agree with you, man. Like, me and my son will have these conversations, you know, because you'll hear people say, even Trump, Trump say, you know, he's, you know, he's a born again Christian. And I'm like, ah, you gotta see the fruit, right? The fruit, Jesus said to judge one another by our fruit. And there, there are things in his life that doesn't point to him having a salvation experience where he's, he is, he has turned over his life to the lordship of Jesus Christ, right?
And I wanna see it. Like, this is, I think a lot of people get mad, I mean, I already know they will, cause I've heard that, we've said this before on the show.
They're getting mad, they're getting mad that you said that. But, but we are as Christians supposed to judge one another by our, by our fruit and our life.
And how am I loving this man if I genuinely look at him and hear the things he says about, I think God will let me in, cause I ended enough wars. And then not, like, I think it's way more unloving to hear things like that and then to just go ahead and say he's saved, cause you want him to be. Than it is for me to say, I actually don't see the fruit there, so let's nation, let's pray for his salvation. And, and see that true conversion.
And like you said though, too, is the, I'm, man, we've never seen, I've never seen in my lifetime, like, Jesus, the gospel. Being brought into the government, the way we've seen it over the last couple of years. I mean, like you said there, he, he brought in Pete Hegseth, they're having prayer at the Pentagon. And Pete's not ashamed of it, he's like, we're having Christian prayer at the Pentagon, right? And I'm, he's, he's, he's brought back a lot of different, you know, it's Christmas, not, you know, not Xmas anymore. I mean, it's just all these things that he's, he's pushing a nation to, to, to want to have God in our nation. So he's done a lot, yeah, I'm joyful, I'm thankful for him, but I do pray for him too, that he comes to a true saving experience in Christ.
And one of the reasons I pray for him in that regard is because, I heard, you know who Al Moller is? He's president of Southern Seminary. He's a writer for World, World Opinions and a bunch of stuff like that. And I heard him say that if you go down the path of a Christless conservatism. That any Christless path is not good. A Christless conservatism could be real bad. It could be dictata, dictatorial. There's a lot that you could see go down that path. And the thing that I'm, that I feel joy about is that he is aware enough culturally. To not go down, like he's surrounding himself with Christians. Owen Strand is one of the guys who is, he's a Midwestern guy, another Baptist who, there's a picture of his fist on the Oval Office. When all those other people were in there. So I'm really joyful about that. But I think we need to, well, no, we need to continue to go in that direction. And we need a, a president eventually. You went to the funeral that was at Bridgewater. Did you listen to, you heard Glenn Youngkin speak at?
Oh, yes.
I mean, that was, that was the gospel right there, so. And he's, he's got future aspirations, so. I was like, it would be very cool to see a JD Glenn Youngkin and then to eventually see a Glenn Youngkin there. I wish, I think he's being strategic, but I do wish he'd done more about abortion so far in our country. But I think it's because he's being strategic, we could have a conversation with him and be like, why have you not done more with these things?
You talking about Trump?
No, Youngkin.
Oh, Youngkin, yeah.
Yeah, in general.
Yeah, I, I've been, I've definitely been a Youngkin fan. I believe he won the election. Well, I don't believe, I know he won that election because McOffill said, you know, parents don't have a right in their kid's education. And so when he said that, Youngkin, you saw four years ago, he just ran. He ran with that, right? And I did as a school board member, I was like, you know what, the only thing when I did interviews was, I'm gonna talk about parental rights. And I'm, so, I, I've, I'm thankful he put out the Youngkin Model Policies where, you know, where we, we adopted on day one. Once, you know, I was, I was sharing with you earlier though, that I was one of four when I came on the school board. I was one conservative versus four liberals on our board. And we were allowing kids to change their names at school from, and not tell the parents. And so, when, when a principal told me about that, I was like, are you serious? Like, I worked in the school for almost a decade, I didn't know it went that far. I would tell people all the time, like, we live in a very conservative community, but a lot of our teachers aren't conservatives. And we know that, we know the reason why is because so many of them are indoctrinated at the universities. That they, they get put back into the public schools and they persuade our kids in, in, in not a conservative way. And so, I, I'm aware of that as a dad. I do, you know, my kid will come home and tell me, Dad, we learned this today and we'll, we'll go and we'll find it in the scripture or we'll, we'll do our own study.
Doesn't it suck that you have to go and basically de-brainwash?
Yeah, yeah, well, my kids get a good brainwashing at home. I indoctrinate my kids very well and biblical truths. And, and so, I'm, but I would not, I tell people all the time, there's no way I would put my daughter in public schools. And, and the reason.
How old's your daughter?
My daughter is almost, she'll, she will be 10 this month.
She's right at that age.
Well, she's at the, you know, I was telling you earlier though, that, well, I was telling you about some other things. But I was talking earlier about the flags, the one teacher that had the flags put up in there and the pride flags and everything else. Well, my daughter loves dance, she loves the arts, she loves being, you know, in theater and doing all kinds of stuff like that. And that was the classroom and my daughters would, would be her high school where the pride flag was up, where the American flag should be. And all these sexual flags were in there. And we see that in the arts like that, that there is this push, this LGBTQI plus push within the arts. And I feel like as a dad, I would be throwing my own daughter to the wolves, saying, here you go, you know? And I'm like, no way. There's no way. I love that girl so much. I'm gonna protect her. And so.
No sacrifice is too, too big for something like that.
And so my, but my sons, they, and I tell people, I'm not ashamed of this. The only reason my sons have went back to public schools is just play sports.
Yeah.
They love, they love sports. And I think it's a great opportunity for them. And not only that, but you know, like my, my son who's a sophomore this year. He, and he's, it's an opportunity for him to be a light in darkness. And, and he has taken on that call from God. Like he's like, Dad, not only do I want people to know I'm a Christian, cause his eighth grade year, he was like the, he was the typical, like kid who went from, you know, like a Christian school to public school their first year. He, he was just totally wild. Like everything I told him he shouldn't do, he did. And I, but he, he had to find himself. And through that experience he had in eighth grade, like my son really had a salvation experience for himself in, in that summer.
What grades he in that?
He's a sophomore this year.
Okay, at Spotswood?
At Spotswood High School. And so he went back last year and he was like, Dad, I, I didn't hang out with, you know, certain kids. I, I made people know that I was a Christian, this and that. But he said, this year when I go back as a sophomore, he said, I don't just want people to know I'm a Christian. But he said, I wanna be able to, I'm like, share the gospel with these kids. And so I'm like, you know what? That's, I know God's got him there for, for a specific reason. And I know that he can handle some of the indoctrination things that we get in, in history classes or, or the gender ideology that we see. And we, we came up with a, a flag policy to get, basically to get the pride flags out of our schools. Because we had so many teachers flying LGBTQ flags inside of our schools. And so, but we came up with a, a flag policy where we said, okay, we're only going to, we're only going to recognize certain flags within our schools. And we also said that we're not going to allow schools, right when you walk in them, to have communist flags hanging in our foyers. And because many schools you go into, public schools you go into these days, right when you walk in, they have all these other national flags hanging in their foyers or wherever. And I said, no, these are American schools. We want, it's important that our kids grow up. Talk about, can our public school be redeemed? We need to have a generation that grows up that loves America. You know, when kids graduate from high school and they walk across that stage and they pull out their Puerto Rican flag, or they pull out their Mexican flag, or they pull out all these other national flags as they walk across that stage. That tells me that they don't love America. And they don't know what they've been blessed with over the last so many years of their life to be, to receive a free education. Oops, to receive, sorry.
Good. This is gonna be a funny little clip. Passengers talk with their hands.
Yeah. It's like bam, what just fell, what broke? But I, so anyway, yeah. But we, there's a flag policy. We said, you can have your flag, you can have another national flags in your ESL classes, the library. I couldn't be in a, it could be in a, in a cafeteria, but it couldn't be in a major, in a, in a large common area. But only in those large common areas or world geography or history classes, things like that, right? But when you walk into our schools in Rockham County, you're gonna know that you're in America.
Yeah.
And we want the kids to, to, they, I, I want a generation to, when they see the flag to be proud of it.
To wanna build up their own country.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I don't have an issue with people who love their flag and love the, their, you know, their ancestors that came before them, or even if they're from that area. But that has to be, like, that's part of what makes America, America is that our country is a melting pot. But it's not a, it's a melting pot.
It has to be a melting pot.
Yeah, it's not a, uh, there's a reason the melt is in there.
Yes.
Like, so you're becoming an American through the melting pot, not rejecting America.
Exactly right. I thought about that the other day. It's, it's a melting pot. It's always been called a melting pot. So all these nations came together, like all these, all these immigrants came together. They went into the melting pot. Well, what did they come out? They came out Americans.
Yeah.
And so that's where we have to get back to. We have to get back to people that wanna come to our country because they wanna assimilate to our country, that love our values. And want to become Americans in, in America. So.
I wasn't aware of the flag thing. There's a lot of kids like throwing flags up.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Go, go to any graduation, a lot of times, and you'll see kids walk across the stage and they'll pull out their, you know, Puerto Rican flags and, or Mexican flags.
And you think that's like them smacking in the face?
Well, I, as an American, I feel like it's like, they're more proud of their, their country they came from than the country that just gave them a free education here in America, right? And we, so taxpayers just gave you a free opportunity to receive a free education, to give you schools to go to that were warm, are cool. And most of the time fed you for free as you went through. And it just doesn't feel like as an American, it doesn't feel like they have assimilated. And they have a love of country that, that my kids have. My kid told me, he said, Dad, when I go to school, he said, uh, he said, I counted the other day. He said, there was only seven people in my class that stood up to say the Pledge of Allegiance. And, and he, and he said, Dad, that's not, that's not, um, that, that takes place in, in all throughout my time, since eighth grade to 10th grade, I look around.
It started when I was in school.
Yeah. And so, you know, when I was a kid and I went through, majority of our class stood up for the Pledge of Allegiance, right? Like the kid who just woke up and they're still trying to sleep on their desk, maybe they sat down. But it wasn't, they were boycotting to be Americans.
There was a hatred for, yeah, country. I think, um, I think that's because in, you have to agree, like, there's a narrative that's been painted of this, the straight white male narrative.
Well, Hillary Clinton said it yesterday.
If you say that you love your country, that means you're racist, which is insane to me. But that's what these kids have been indoctrinated with.
Right.
So, so it's like, I've gotta throw out my Puerto Rican flag because the American one only means straight white male.
Yes.
When it's like, no, the melting pot is supposed to mean that it means black, white, Hispanic. But we're together, melted. And we've created this awesome culture as one people.
Greatest nation in the world, I believe.
Yeah, yeah. And so that's really sad. But I do, I show a certain amount of sympathy for the fact that they've been indoctrinated. And this all started with, when this was a Protestant country and the Puritans came here, there were universities, the highest level that were planted, Princeton.
Yeah.
All those Ivy League schools. They were.
Putting out missionaries, man.
Yeah, Jonathan Edwards was Princeton. I mean, greatest pastor to ever walk on American soil. And I'm gonna give my guy some bliss bombs. He's a reformed Puritan. But, um, and, and you saw.
He was a missionary to the American Indians. I'm, oh, man. I'll, I'll come up with his name here in a second, but.
I go to Judson. So Judson was the first one to go to, uh, Judson went to, are you talking about Columbus?
No.
Columbus has a lot of diaries.
Yeah, yeah, no, I am, David Brainerd.
Okay.
David Brainerd went to, I think David Brainerd went to Yale and became a missionary to the American Indians.
So Judson went to Brown, I think. And then he was the first missionary to ever leave America. And he went to officially. Um, and he went to Burma.
Okay.
And so he was a particular Baptist, which is what I am. He went to Burma. He planted churches there, did an amazing work. I mean, this is in a way smarter generation than we are, because we're shaped by this media and all the TV we're constantly watching. He graduated, or, uh, no, I think he graduated college when he was like, with his master's degree when he was like 20.
Wow.
Um, and when his dad went on a business trip, when he was three, for a week, his mother taught him to read, learn to read when he was three in a week.
It's because, you know, our nation during that time too, when you were 15 years old, man, they were going off to, to universities.
Edwards graduated at 17.
Right.
With his masters, I believe. Seventeen years old.
And that's, but they, 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 they matured because there was a responsibility that was put upon them. And now we look at a generation and say, well, you're still a kid till you're 18. Or you're still a kid till you, after you, after, yeah, you know, you need to be a man. Like you, you're not, you're not a grown up. You're not a, we call him a young man when they go off to college.
So as far as your son goes, if you hadn't told me how old he was, I would have cringed. Because I consider your son a man. He's at the point where he's a man now. If he was your daughter's age and you told me, I'm sending him in there to, like, you're sending a kid into a mission field to be. But other people would hear that. And they'd say, you're sending a kid to a mission field. And I would say, no, he's a man. Like it's, it's time for him to be an adult and be a man.
Always.
Uh, speaking of Vody, Vody was really good about, he started bringing his kid to work with him when he was 15. And so that's when.
What a great, yeah, I think that's, I think that's great that I'm Vody, man. I love, is it Vody?
Matthew would tell you it was Vody. Uh, but it is Vody.
Vody, okay, all right. Now, I first, I first learned about him during COVID and picked up one of his books during COVID and, and read it. And, uh, man, what a giant we lost here recently. And.
Three of them, man. MacArthur, Kirk and, and Vody.
It's just a, it's, we've, we've gotta pick up the mantle. We gotta, as a generation, we've gotta take it serious where we're running with the mantle that Christ left us. And so, hey, one last thing on that topic there was Jonathan Edwards that published David Brainerd's Diaries.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That's awesome. Yeah, Jonathan Edwards. So even in, in listening, I'm always super careful with using the word revival. So even listening to that, I'm like, I'm gonna have to look into it.
Yeah, yeah.
And the reason being is because there's revivalism and then there's revival. And I believe revivalism is you actually started with, um, oh goodness gracious, second grade awakening.
Oh, with, um, Charles Finney?
Finney. So Finney, I don't agree with what he did. So Finney, I think, went and studied the world and said, these are all the things we can do to get as many people in the church as possible. And what came from that was if we can, hindsight's 2020, we can look back and see what actual conversions came from it. And it was very confusing. They don't know. They don't know how many people were saved, how many people weren't. We don't ever truly know. But it's because you get a rock concert, you can, you can find all those same people under a different roof that has nothing to do with the Bible on a Saturday night.
Right.
But you get somebody preaching the gospel and singing the gospel and living the gospel and doing those ordinary things that the Bible says. I mean, Edwards had to encourage people to stay awake during his sermons. And I don't, I don't, I don't think he should be doing that. I think you should have enough conviction that people are actually engaged.
Well, someone fell asleep when Paul was preaching too.
That's true. They fell off of a roof. So, but true revival, that if you look back, I've studied this a little bit, not extensively. But I'm good friends with people who have studied it extensively. Our actual, our lead pastor, that was his main focus. I believe true revival is you take those ordinary things that are in the Bible and you pray the word, you see the word, seeing the word as baptism in the Lord's Supper. You sing the word, um, you preach the word, like all of those primary things. And that's what Edwards did. And he said, I'm gonna do this day in and day out, and I'm gonna trust the Lord with a result. It was the greatest, well, known now as the greatest pastor to ever walk on American soil. And he had to encourage people to stay awake. Well, Finney came along and said, it's a science. And I can take all these things from the world, like the altar call, like the red carpet and the cedar shavings are what they used back then. All these things that I can stir the emotions. And then I can make you make an emotional decision, which Edwards was against. So I think if you look at Finney's, then you can look at it and you can say, I could do that today. Come on, man. Like I could do a bunch of things in the church that the world loves and get as many people in here and cram it pack. And then get the most emotional song going with the smoke and the lights. And when all that's going, I can say, come up and dunk your, get dunked.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're gonna get a lot of people.
Yeah, no, no. I, I, I agree with that point. I don't, I don't agree with the part with Finney. I really.
That's okay.
That's where we definitely differ there with Finney. I, Finney, um, the Great Awakening, I see him as used by God in a mighty way.
I do think God used him. I'm not saying God didn't use him. I'm saying, um, I believe, I don't believe the whole thing was real. I think there were a lot of people that didn't really get saved, that it was just an emotional response.
Yeah, well, you know, we can't, whether it be under Finney or whether it be under Edwards, oh, I'm, there can be an emotional response. And the fact that, you know, as we, you know, we won't know whether it's a true conversion unless we start seeing the fruit of people's lives, right? And so I.
I won't know till I die.
Yeah, right. Well, I, but I, but I do agree with you with this fact, is the, is the fact that we need to make sure in the church with a big C, that people are coming to faith, not out of an emotional experience, but they're coming to him in knowing the decision that they're making. And I'll give you an example, like my father-in-law is preaching the gospel in Central America. And there's this woman under conviction the whole service. She's weeping, she's crying. And we have one thing where we'll go out, uh, we do with Mia Panis, we'll go out after the service. And we will personally invite people to come forward or to receive Christ, you know? And, uh, so we'll do that. And a lot of times what we've seen is that that personal touch with just one-on-one with someone will be enough for them to be like, man, I, I really wanted to make Christ as, and I don't believe you had to walk to an altar to give your, your life to Christ either. But, so this woman's under conviction, she's crying the whole time. She heard, she hears the, the beautiful gospel of Jesus Christ preached to my father-in-law. And he, she cries through the altar call. She cries like after the altar call. He goes to her after the service and she's still sitting there. And she's like, and he asks her, do you want to receive Christ? And she's sitting there crying. And finally through an interpreter, she says, I am, I'm, I'm living in a adulterous life right now.
Yeah.
And I'm getting ready to inherit a lot of money from the man I'm living with. And if I give my life to Jesus, I know I'm not gonna receive it.
Opens it up and says, go to the rich man, go to that.
Yeah, yeah. But, but, and so, and so, but at least she understood, like, there's a decision.
True gospel is preached. Like, so, so for example, I'll, I will, I'll throw one of my own guys under the bus even. Even though I love him and he, and the Lord used him and he is my better. The Lord used him in ways that I don't think he'll use me. We'll see what happens in my life. But Billy Graham.
Right.
Um, I was, I'm not pro what happened at the Crusades. Um, and the only reason being is hindsight's 2020. We look back, church attendance declined. We thought this was some big amazing work of God that was happening, when, when we look back at the numbers, what was really happening was when Billy Graham came to an area, all the Christians were showing up, for the most part. There were people that were saved through that and, um, more than I'll ever know.
Yep.
But when we look back at the statistics, we see that, could that have been this shade that was thrown over people's eyes? That we're now not going out and doing the Great Commission because they were putting it on Billy Graham's shoulders, because a million people were showing up.
Right.
Those sorts of things. And that's, that's a Baptist.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, you know, well, you know, Leonard Ravenhill was a big, um, he wasn't a big supporter of Billy Graham. Because he all, and Leonard Ravenhill, I believe, you know who he was? But I, I, I see him as a prophet to America from England, born in Eng- in, in England, came to America.
Okay.
Uh, look him up. I mean, he's one of the.
Ravenhill?
Yeah, yeah, Leonard Ravenhill. Yeah, on his, on his gravestone, he has, uh, it's like his finger pointing back out you. But it has his quote, are the things you're living for worth Christ dying for? That's on his gravestone.
I like it.
And so Ravenhill, Ravenhill said, he didn't believe that Second Corinthians 517 was the, the scripture for revival, you know? If my people were called by my name, will humble themselves. You know, he said, I believe it was in Malachi, he said, if the priests will begin to weep between the porch and the altar. And that's what, that was his model for revival is like, it's when the priest that God has called, when we begin as ministers, begin to, to weep and to cry between the porch and the altar. Then we'll see a true revival, a true move of God. And I, I like that, that part there because it really does start with God's people. Judgment starts in the house of God, right? And so if the ministers will get right with God, my gosh.
There's a lot of ministry, yeah. I will, I will say.
And I, and I'll throw, and I'll throw a lot of people, you know, there even in our, I'm, I'm, I don't know. I, I really don't have a camp because, you know, we were gonna be assembly of God, but we had already had everything. Like, that's where my, a lot of my denomination.
Just more charismatic. You'd say, uh, we're on, in that lane.
Yeah, but, but I'm, I'm, I'm with you, man. I'm like, the, the lights, the, the, the smoke, the, all that stuff. And the church needs to not worry about that stuff there. Like, we need to get back to the authentic walk with Christ. And all that stuff, like the, the one church that we partner with a lot in Central America, and especially in, um, El Salvador is a church called Aleem.
Okay.
And they are one of the best churches that I have seen on discipling believers.
That's awesome.
They are, they are a, um, they are a, a cell group style church.
Okay.
Uh, they meet at, and they have a, one, they have one place where they do meet a couple of times a week. But when you get saved under an Aleem church, they're gonna make you a leader to go out there and disciple other people. And they're going to encourage you to become a cell leader, to grow the guy.
That's what Training to Send does. So they'll do, as soon as you have made that profession, um, you are getting trained by a master trainer. And the master trainer is training you to be a master trainer, to go further into the bush, to continue to, I mean, these guys are on motorcycles for four hours, going through the jungle. And they're showing up at places where people are still sacrificing their children on rocks. We got videos of not the kids getting sacrificed, but of mothers saying, four of my kids on that rock right there before Christ came. And their plea was, why didn't you come sooner? Like, we've been here. Never heard the name of Jesus. Yeah, man. And, um, I mean, of course, in places like that too, um, there are miraculous signs. Like, I don't reject miraculous signs. I do think ordinarily, um, they were used as the apostles were proclaiming the word of God that we now have in the canon. But, um, but yeah, there's, it takes all kinds, takes all kinds of people and you have all kinds of camps. And, um, as long as those primary things are the primary things. Like I have people, there are people who would completely disagree with me and say, the smoke and the lights are a great thing. And, and, and I'd be like, are you preaching the gospel? Okay, like whatever. Like, I'm not gonna fight you to death on, on smoking lights and stuff like that. We're just. Okay, like, whatever. Like, I'm not gonna fight you to death on, on smoking lights and stuff like that. We're just not doing that, like where we're at. Because we're trying to keep those things that we're focused on, the things that the Bible explicitly tells us to focus on.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I think the discipleship part is, is where we need to be at as a church. The, you know, we have lights at our, at our church, but it's just, it's in the background of.
We do too.
Of aesthetic thing.
That's how ours are. Cause we have some in the background.
Yeah, but we refuse.
I mean, like the spotlight.
Do the smoke. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, like, the.
I don't want it to be a concert. When you come to church, I don't want it to be a concert, right? Like, you, you should feel, I want the presence of God to be felt in our services, and I want Him to be honored. And that's one thing that we tell our congregation all the time, like, worship's not for you. So if you say, I don't like this song, well, this, guess what? The song's not for you.
Yeah. Ephesians says, you're singing to God and singing to one another.
Right. And worship isn't a song, right? Worship is a lifestyle. Worship is, you know, it's our reasonable service, right? It's, it's, it's dying on the altar of Christ, and that's worship, right? And so that's our reasonable worship to do. But I think this generation too just sees worship as a song. It's not a song, right? It's, it's a life of saying, is carrying the cross and saying, I deny myself, and I'm picking up my cross.
Yeah.
And I'm coming after you.
See, that's what's refreshing to me as somebody who's, in my study, what I've found is, send you a podcast episode on it. But one of the reasons I'm convicted on that I'm not overjoyed about what Finney produced is because I believe part of the reason we call the worship pastor, the music pastor, even though there, any pastor is gonna be a worship pastor, you know? Is because you can see a path where music became a really solid way to stir the emotions. And you even see that in, uh, what's it called? The Satanic Panic. Like, with the Satanic Panic.
Right, right, right.
Like, you see that with all those things, where music was the way to stir emotions and to be able to get people to come up to altar calls and things like that. And so what becomes worship is the music, the experience.
Yeah, yeah.
And we've forgotten that Romans 12, you were just saying, Romans 12, 1 to 2, present your bodies as a living sacrifice, holy and acceptable to the Lord. This is your true worship.
Well, Spurgeon, you know, well, you know, Spurgeon wouldn't even, I'm, he'd, one of the things I've, I've learned about Spurgeon. Spurgeon would do a lot of his counseling on people being saved and salvation on Monday in his office.
Yeah.
And I'm, and it produced, it produced a lot of fruit in his ministry. So, no, what you're saying is, 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 has weight behind it in the fact that, man, I don't want, like, when we go and we preach the gospel, wherever we go, like, I, me and my pastor, we always say, we're going for the one. So, and that comes out of a, a time spent with the Lord, with Him on a plane one time where He said, you know, you know, how many is gonna be saved? Like, I, he was just wondering, like, what God's gonna do on this trip? Like, how many people are gonna be saved? And the Lord kind of rebuked him, was like, you just worry about the one in front of you.
Yeah.
And I'll worry about the rest. And so.
We just plant the seed.
Yes. You know, some plant, some water, but God gives you the increase. And so, but if we're faithful to plant the seed, God, water the seed, God's gonna be faithful to give us the increase. And, but we've got to do it for the one before us. And not only that, but man, if we're doing it for numbers, like, if we're coming back like, hey, you know, a thousand people, a couple thousand. That means nothing in eternity. Like, how many of those people actually are serving the Lord a year later, two years later, 10 years later, right?
Discipleship, man. And you'll never, you'll never know like that. I love that passage about, we are just, need to be faithful to plant and water until the ground. God's gonna make it grow. I think we're gonna die one day, and there're gonna be little seeds that we never knew. Like, think of even Billy Graham. Like, think, speaking of him, Charles Spurgeon, who shared the gospel with them.
Yeah.
And might have never known what they became Prince of Preachers, Charles Spurgeon. My associate pastor, which is Lance English, his PhD is from Midwestern, and they're undergrads Spurgeon.
Okay, is it really? Wow.
And so they've got his cigar that he died with in his vest pocket. They've got it in the library. They got the Spurgeon Library. And, uh, yeah, I mean, solid, one of the men I look up to the most. And guess what? Never went to seminary.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Uh, he was in a day and age when there wasn't one to go to, really. It would have been a sound.
Was it R.C. Sproul here recently? Was it him that said, I saw on a, on a podcast, and they were talking about seminary and everything? One of the things that, that Ravenhill would, would kind of joke around, he would, he would call it cemetery. But, but, but what he saw producing was kind of what you're talking about a little bit. But he saw that, you know, like R.C. Sproul said, he said, know your Bible and pray. Like those, and, and when I hear someone that's as smart as R.C. Sproul and as intelligent as he is, and he gets it, right? Like, if you're in ministry for a certain amount of time, you, you see a lot of talking heads out there.
Yeah.
A lot of people that know a lot of Bible, but they have zero relationship with the Lord or the Holy Spirit in their life.
They've got some orthodoxy, but no orthopraxy. It's not flowing out of there.
And we, and we've got to keep Christ in the center of our lives. And everything we do, whether it be in ministry, whether God calls you to the public arena, like, kind of like I've been kind of dabbling in both over the last couple of years. But I'm, we've got to keep that relationship with Christ at the forefront of everything we do in our lives. If not, it becomes works. It's just religion, right? You know, and it's, it's, you confess me with your mouth, but your heart's far from me.
Whitewashed tombs.
Yes, yeah. And we don't want to be that, right? Like, that's, that's where we really, we've got to hone in. And we were talking about that with Trump a while ago. We, because we're believers and because we've had this experience with Christ moving the old man out and the new man in, we want Him to have that same experience. Because when He has that experience, it won't be deniable. It won't be denied. Like, you'd be like, man, you, you hear Trump got saved? He's like, no, I don't hear it, I see it. I see it. Like, I see it in him. I see his life changes, speeches change, everything in balance changed. So, anyway, that's my prayer too, brother.
Yeah, that's great. Um, oh, you said something that made me, anyway, what is your, your future? Do you see a future in politics at all past this, or are you?
I am.
Cause you, you said, I mean, I'm, I feel like I'm gonna be bi-vocational my whole life. I don't have an aspiration of politics, but I do to this media side of what we're doing, and then also to pastoral ministry. Do you think, you see that in your own life with politics?
I, I'm gonna be honest with you, like, I hate politics.
Me too, to be honest.
I, I really do. I really, I'm, I got into this because I wanted to do the right thing. That's my heart. Like, I, if you go look at my signs, like, my signs are blue. Like, in politics, everybody knows blue is Democrat, red is Republican, right? And so, like, I, I had people in the first election that voted for me, didn't know who I was. They're like, yeah, I voted for you. I saw your signs. And I'm like, but they've said, what, but I didn't vote for Trump, you know, or, or something about Trump. And I was like, I don't think, you know, we're like.
It's kind of a good psychology, then, right? You're like, these people aren't even gonna look into me.
Yeah, no, no, but this time they know. They know I've made that big of an impact. They know. And so, I, I, but in politics, I've learned, brother, that I'm, that we have, in, in the political world, you get people that get into it because they want to build careers.
Yeah, sure. Career politicians.
Yeah, and I believe in turn limits big time. Like, even if I wasn't gonna run again after this election, if I win this election, I'm not gonna run again for school board next election.
Can you do it as, like, unlimited?
Yeah, you can. Yeah, we just had one school board member that served like 20 some years. And altogether, I think, you know, he had one stint where he didn't serve four years and came back. But I, I'm, I don't want that. Like, I think you should have parents that come up behind, and then they put in the work and they do it as well. And.
Disciple.
Yeah, this is a community, this is a community service that I'm doing. I get paid $5,000 a year to be on the school board. That brings, you know, a hundred thousand dollars of headaches. That, that brings people that, that don't even like me, they've never met me. I've been called a bigot, a racist, all these things. And then they hear other side stories, like, oh, I hear Matt this and that. Well, you're only hearing rumors. But if you would know me, know my heart, walk with me.
So I like sitting down with people, man. There's, uh, so Doug, the guy I was telling you about that we interviewed, is highly hated, Doug Wilson.
Yeah.
The, uh, he's actually, um, so like, he's one of the leading voices within the Christian nationalist movement.
Yeah.
But not the, you hear that, and that's such a big.
He's said a big word there.
Yeah, yeah. So, so not the, uh, not the people who, not, what's the best way to put it?
Not like Jesse Duplantis? That want to be a, what is it, Dominion theology?
Yeah, like the super, not the super rich ones that like, have that prosperity-esque, you know, like, I don't know if you know, like Jesse Duplantis.
Yeah, I know who he is.
Or like Kenneth Copeland or those guys, or Benny Hinn. Like, these people who just have made a buttload of money off of their ministries. And like, they're just really conservative and they're Christian nationalists. Not, it's not that world. I mean, they're Presbyterian. But they're, uh, he's, he's considered one of the leading voices in Christian nationalism. And they're like, why have you embraced that term? And he's like, well, it's better than most, most of the other stuff I get called, like, like a bigot and, and like, stuff like that. And, uh.
Well, I heard most people say, when they get called a Christian nationalist now, like, yeah, I'm a Christian and I love my nation. And so, I'm, and, and I, I get that. The gospel should never be draped with the American flag, right? It's, it can't be draped, it can't be draped with any flag.
It's the gospel. Like, it expands far out from all of that. You are no longer Jew nor Greek nor male nor female. Now, that's not trans stuff there. Either male nor female, or we can exegete that and get into. But that passage is the church. The church is, you are from every tribe, people, tongue, and nation, and we'll all bow our knee to the Lord and worship Him. And, uh, yeah, so there's a, I'm a Baptist for a reason. Separation of church and state did come from a letter written to the.
Thomas Jefferson?
Yeah, to Philadelphia Convention Baptist Convention. It's because we kept getting killed and jailed every time there was a. Um, and so I do believe in separation of church and state. Now, that doesn't mean I, I mean, I would love to see the whole country get converted by the grace of God. And then we'd be a Christian nation. Like, that would, and I believe in the principles. I do think they were. I think they were Christian principles that we were founded upon, but.
Oh, absolutely was.
Yeah, I, I really love what you said about, I do think there's a whole group of people out there who think the Bible should be wrapped in an American flag, and that's the wrong idea. Like, you're getting the wrong idea there with that. It spans so much further than that.
I don't believe, I don't believe in Dominion theology or the seven mountains that, you know, Christians are, you know, they say are supposed to conquer. They're saying, I don't see that in the gospel. I don't see that Jesus teaching that theology within, to His disciples. And I'm, yeah, is it good to have Christian leaders? Yeah, it would be good if you have Christian leaders because they're gonna be, they should follow the teachings of Christ, right?
And I want our laws to reflect.
Yes, yeah. And so, or, you know, is it good to have Christians over, you know, a lot of the arts and movies and things like that? Yeah, because they'd be producing really good. I mean, I think all the things that they could be, be producing right now with all the biblical messages, like, I don't know what you think about The Chosen, but one thing I do like about The Chosen is the fact that it just seems, when you watch The Chosen, whether, you know, you like it or not, there's, I know there's a different.
I'm not a hater. My, uh, my following probably is at large, but I'm not.
Yeah, but, but, but one thing you say.
I saw it in the movie theater. I went and saw the one of the episodes.
Yeah, I tell people all the time, well, I read the Bible. So, but, but when you do watch, when you do watch The Chosen, it just brings Jesus alive in certain points, right? And so, I, I'm not looking for The Chosen for my theology. I'm not looking for The Chosen for, to, to, like, I have a relationship with Christ. But I think it's pretty interesting when he, you know, he sits down with, with different people that you read about in the Bible, and you're like, ah, I didn't think about it that way. You know, it just, it kind of just brings different things to life. And, and so in the, in the movie industry, man, we could be making some really cool movies on David and Goliath, right? Or Daniel Last did, or, or whatever it may be. But we could be making some incredible movies that would, that would push people to want knowing more about God.
So that's a future goal for Referrmark, one of the, James over here, Jamie, that's what Joe Rogan calls this guy that's out by the. But, uh, he's got some goals for Christian media. And Canon Plus, the guy we were talking about, Doug Wilson, the guy's at Apologia.
Okay.
Um, a lot of, they're, they're good friends. So Jeff Durbin and, uh, and Doug, they're all real good friends. And they are really impacting that area. And I think, I mean, Christians used to dominate it. Like, the ceiling of the Sistine Chapel and like, all that ancient art that was done by. I think, I want to see Christians dominate all those spheres. And I want to see them do it because they're doing it for the glory of God. The work of their hands that they're committing to Him every day, we should be beating the world. We should be doing better entertainment, better, and for those purposes.
Yeah, well, I think it's Charlie Kirk, right? I mean, what an example, what an example for us all, is someone that, that did all things as unto the, unto the glory of the Lord, as unto God, right? He was doing that.
And you saw that more and more in his life, the older he got, like.
Yeah. I mean, for him to accomplish what he did in 31 short years is, is, is only God, right? It's only God in his life. But I, no, I, so I don't, I don't believe we're supposed to dominate all those areas, but it's not a bad thing for Christians to be in those.
Yeah, I want to win. Like, you know, and I'm saying, I don't want to win so people look at us and lift man up on a pedestal. I want to do it when people look at us and go, why are you guys so good at this? And we say, because our God is the living God, and we do it for His glory. It's because we're Christians. That's why we're so good at this. I think we've forgotten that. And so we've, we've made Christianity so lukewarm at large within evangelicalism in general. And when we do that, nobody notices. Like, they're just over there doing their thing. They're in their big building on Sunday morning and doing their thing.
Yeah, and, and the standards, right? The standards that Charlie would even preach, and he would even, you know, we, there's a generation. I tell people all that after being a youth pastor for 15 years, teenagers want you to tell them what to do. A lot of people are like, no way. They, you know, they're rebellious. And, but that's what I said, though, but, but teenagers want you to tell them. They would, teenagers want you to give them parameters in their life. And, and so Charlie would be telling them, you know, hey, you need to get married.
Get married, have kids, get a job, work hard. It's like.
Right.
Think these things are revolutionary.
Don't have blue hair. And I, I don't, but, you know, it's, you know, being an adult, grow up and, and, and take responsibility. And we need to start hearing more pastors and preachers sharing that with their congregations because we have a generation that, that's lost. They don't know what to do right now, and they need guidance. And they need the biblical principles to be able to plant their, their foundation on and to be able to grow.
Yeah, amen. Well, brother, the last thing I want to ask you before we do a fun speed round at the end of every episode. But before we get to that, where can people find you if they're looking for your ministry?
Yeah, I was thinking about that earlier. So you can go, like, I, I'm not big on, the only platform I really have is on Facebook because I'm 46 years old. So, so I, I do have an Instagram account that I never use. So if you go on there, you can find me. And I do need to start, like, being on Instagram more, because that's where, you know, your generation's at.
Yeah, honestly, I hate it too. I'm 27, and I am a Facebook, I like Facebook, and I like Twitter, X.
Yeah.
And if I can stay on all of it, I'd prefer to do that. But I have to be there for what I'm doing.
No, and I agree, and I, and I'm not against like, the, the platforms of social media because it is catching people out there. I mean, like, think about how many people has heard the gospel through the Charlie Kirk realm reels over the last three weeks.
And all these apologists and stuff.
Yeah, yeah. Doing great works on campuses. I, so you can find me, I do have an Instagram account. I don't even know what it is. But if you check out Matt Cross, you'll find, you'll probably find me.
I like that your last name's Cross. That's pretty sweet.
I love my Spanish name. It's Mateo Cruz. And so, like, I, I would prefer you call me Mateo Cruz. But I, but, you know, I am a racist, so I can't say that, you know?
Yeah, yeah. The world put that label on you. So, but you go over and ask the people in, uh, where you've done your missions work, if you are.
Exactly. And they don't even know what Latinx means. When I ask them, like, what's Latinx? They're like, what do you mean?
Have you seen Matt Walsh, what is a woman? And they're like, he goes to Africa.
Oh, it's so funny.
Explains to them what's going on, and they're like, what are you talking about?
Do you want to move to America? Don't sound like I do. I asked, I asked all my friends down in, in Central America about that, about, you know, Latina X or Latinx. They're like, we don't even have that on our keyboard. Like, we don't even, like, we can't even type. It's so foreign. Because, you know, the, the Latino communities, everything's either, you know, male or female, and a lot of the things that they.
La or lo.
Yeah.
Or L, a la or L.
Latina, I, Latina.
Even objects, like verbs and stuff like that.
Yeah, it's very, it's, and so when they say in Latinx, they're like, they're so confused by it. But, uh, so you can find me on Facebook. I'm, I'm mostly on Facebook. You can find my church, Path Church, in Harrisburg, Virginia, on there as well. And I'd love to have you come out, and I'd love to be able to connect with you on social media any way I can.
Cool, brother. Well, this is the speed round. Shout out Sean De Mars. He's known as the, oh, what did? So there's a guy that is known as the Walmart brand, The Great Value Doug Wilson. And he called, he gave Sean the title, The Great Value Stephen Furtick, because it kind of looks similar. But Sean De Mars is actually someone we're gonna be interviewing in a couple of months. And he does this at the end of every episode. So that's where I took it from. So I always give him a shout out when I do the same, when I copy him. All right, you ready?
Yep.
Star Wars or Star Trek?
Oh, Star Wars, I guess.
Me too. I'm Star Wars all the way. I'm a nerd. Narnia or Lord of the Rings?
Uh, Narnia.
Okay. I'm more, I, I.
Actually, actually, you know what? Lord of the Rings was kind of creepy to me at first, but after a few years of seeing it, I kind of enjoyed Lord of the Rings more than Narnia because it was just, you see more of a, well, you don't see more, but there is a very spiritual aspect in all of it, right?
Well, dude wrote his own languages and stuff. Like, Tolkien was just a genius.
Yes.
Uh, we're starting a, a men's book club, and we're starting with Lord of the Rings in the book club. So I'm reading.
So I would already say, I would probably say Lord of the Rings. At first, I liked Narnia.
It used to be Narnia for me too, and I shifted into a Lord of the Rings. I, probably Lewis and other things, but in that, probably, I would say, um, Lord of the Rings. Fruits or vegetables?
Uh, fruits.
Ben Shapiro or Matt Walsh?
Oh, man. That's a hard one. That's a hard one, man. I, I, I like them, I love them both. Uh, oh, man, but you know, Walsh brought, brought us all, you know, what is a woman? So, you know, I, I think in my line of work and what I've done, Matt Walsh has probably over the last four years done more for me.
There you go.
But I want Ben Shapiro to be able to argue like, a lot of things for me.
So smart. Hunting or fishing?
Uh, fishing.
If you were stuck on an island and you could read one book for the rest of your life, other than the Bible, what would it be?
Oh, man. Oh, man. One book other than the Bible. And it couldn't be the Bible.
This is a hard one.
Yeah, that is a very, very hard one. So I'm. I, that's a, I don't, I haven't, I don't know. I'm, I do read books, but to try to figure out one I'd want to read for the rest of my life. I'd want to read, um, give me a, um.
Fan, like a fiction, fiction.
Oh, fiction book?
Yeah, we'll do that. Or if that made it harder, then we'll do theology.
Yeah, I was, I probably did. I was going to say, give me, give me the writings of C.H. Spurgeon, C.H. Spurgeon, so I could just read.
Okay.
Cause I love reading Spurgeon.
Spurgeon's great. Yeah.
Give me, give me Spurgeon's books, um, all day long. And then that would probably be where I would land.
And then you will, you'll be in my camp completely particular Baptist.
I tell you, I, I told you, I have Baptist roots, man.
Yeah, yeah. Spurgeon's wonderful. I would, uh, I would bring a book on ship building, how to build a ship so I could get off the island. So that's what.
I like, yeah, that's, I, I like that.
I can't take credit for it. I heard somebody else say that. Uh, Mexican or Chinese food?
Mexican.
Would you rather eat a grasshopper or a matter baby?
What's a matter baby?
Nothing. What's wrong with you, sugar? Finally got somebody on it. I've done this to so many people. I was, this is like the fourth interview. So now I gotta think of something else to try to get other people on. All right, brother. This has been great. Good to meet you.
Nice to meet you too. Thanks for having me on, brother.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.